You're listening to the Hot Topics Podcast with Psycho 4081, the lovely Lady Lamb Chop, and the fabulous Felonius Feather. Let's get into it.
Welcome everyone to another episode of the Hot Topics Podcast. I'm your host Psycho 4081. And today we want to have a special guest today. This is the beginning of the political election season. So in the past few episodes, you've heard from two other candidates for Baltimore County, Maryland's Baltimore County Council candidates. So today we're going to follow it up with another candidate for District Four. So stay tuned. Okay, we're back with Baltimore County Council Candidate Carson Caminitz, who's running for Councilman for District Four, correct?
Yep. Yeah, thanks Brian. Happy to be here.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I know you have a busy, very busy schedule. You're out the door, ready to race.
So yeah, we're, we're working hard.
We're going to go over some things, community envision, public safety and crime. These are things that are important to basically your constituents, housing development and zoning, economic growth and jobs, education and youth, transportation, infrastructure, taxes, county budget, accountability and leadership, and some of the hot issues. And that's where, you know, where the people really want to get in. And I'm going to ask you also, which I'm not sure if I put that in there, something that happened, a little controversial topic on the Inspector General thing. So we might, if we have time, we'll ask about that. But we want to get him with the first question. And this is what I ask every candidate. What is your biggest challenge facing District Four right now? And what is the first thing you would work on if elected? Oh, excuse me, before that, please tell us the areas of District Four.
Yep. So this past year, Baltimore County Council passed a resolution expanding the council from seven to nine members. And by so doing, they of course had to redistrict. So I'm running to represent the new District Four, which encompasses Pikesville, Greenspring Valley, Lockern and Milford Mill communities.
Ah, okay. Lockern. Okay. So I didn't know that part.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah. So Lockern is a, you know, it's a pretty institutional community in Baltimore County. And frankly, my father grew up in Lockern. I have family that still lives in Lockern. And I got to tell you, I'm happy they're a part of this district in Pikesville because I think a lot of the issues are overlapping.
Outstanding. Yeah. He was in my community as a matter of fact. So.
That's great. I didn't know you grew up in Lockern as well. That's really funny.
Well, I live in that area and I know I was speaking to Councilman Patoka and it was, was it Max? Max Wolfall. And he was giving me the history of how they all, you know, lived in the same area growing up. And I even saw the little picture of them in kindergarten.
That's the legendary photo, you know, it could, you know, possibly be true that two county executives were holding the same sign in the same kindergarten class photo.
Yeah, that would be funny.
Absolutely. It's funny how the world works sometimes.
Yeah. So what is the biggest challenge facing District Four right now? And what is the first thing you would work on if elected?
So I think the biggest challenge that too many people in District Four, to be honest with you, Brian, feel like decisions are being made about them instead of with them. And I think that's true whether you're in Pikesville, Lockern, Milford Mill, or Greenspring Valley. Because they all see the same patterns. Traffic gets worse, rents and home prices go up. We see schools and infrastructure repeatedly under strain. And there's a real sense that what happens in Towson in the council manic office and chamber doesn't always reflect what we are living with on the west side of the county. So to be honest with you, the first thing I'd work on is basic fairness. And not just how our county government works, but how it treats our communities. And I think that starts with development and public safety. Because for development, that means we can't have big projects in communities that either are unprepared to handle them or simply don't want them. They need to come with a real plan for schools, for roads, for transit. And communities have to be at the table early, not just as an afterthought. And then for public safety, we have to take violent crimes seriously. But at the same time, we have to rebuild the trust that's broken. So people feel comfortable calling for help in the first place. So I got to tell you, I want every single person in District Four to feel like they have someone in the room fighting for them every time a big decision gets made, instead of showing up and trying to justify it to them after the fact.
Hmm. Okay. Okay. Makes sense. So in, along with your vision, what makes you uniquely qualified to represent such a diverse council district?
Yeah. So District Four is the most diverse district in Baltimore County. And I got to tell you, that doesn't make it easy on anybody who's running. That requires some real coalition building, showing folks that, hey, you know, I may not understand exactly what you've been through, but I'm willing to show up and listen. And I grew up in Baltimore County seeing two very different sides of it. I remember after football practice one day, I drove a teammate home and he had me drop him at the corner of his street. We were about a block from where his house was. And he looked at me and he said, Carson, I don't think you'd be safe driving me all the way down to the end of this block.
Oh, wow.
Just drop me at the corner. And that stuck with me because he lived there. But he didn't think I would be safe even going there. And we wore the same jerseys, we practiced on the same fields. We had the same teachers, but in reality, we're living two different lives.
Right.
And I also remember later as an adult in Towson, funny enough, I was with the same teammate, but it was a football team reunion. And I watched some of those same teammates, successful, often well-dressed black men, get turned away from a bar because of a so-called dress code. And nobody had to say the word, but we all knew what was going on. It was discrimination and it was plain and it was simple. And those experiences, while I haven't lived them directly, they've shaped my moral compass. Because fairness isn't a slogan. It can't be. It's the standard. And I have those experiences and I've seen it happen, but I also bring a different perspective as a younger candidate. Because a lot of my peers, people I've grown up with, that were invested in by this county, they're asking, can I actually afford to build a life here?
Right.
I hear it from renters in Milford Mill. I hear it from young families in Pikesville, from students everywhere. And I want to give them reasons to stay. I really do. And to do that, you know, you need to have a good leadership style. And I got to tell you, my barometer is simple. I will listen hard. I will be accessible. And I, I'll tell you, Brian, I'll fight like hell for what people tell me what they, what they need. And you know, that's why my personal number is given to everybody I meet. I say, call me if you need help. Call me if you have an idea. Convince me of your perspective. You won't find a stronger advocate. So that's why I'm equipped uniquely to handle the challenges in District Four.
And that's, that's actually an excellent point because a lot of residents feel that sometimes you have candidates that live in a bubble and don't understand their experiences. And you do have that, that experience with your, you know, friends and teammates. So that's, that's a good thing. But you mentioned the crime thing. So I'm gonna segue into that, public safety and crime. Residents in District Four often express concerns about crime. Sometimes it's more perception than actual crime. But what specific strategies would you support to improve public safety?
Yeah, I'll tell you right now, Brian, my, my cards are on the table. I believe in being tough on crime, but I also recognize that being tough on crime requires that we be even tougher on the problems that lead to it. So we need to do both. On the enforcement side, of course, we focus on violent offenders and illegal guns. We use lighting, we use cameras, we use environmental designs to make it harder for crime to occur. There are dark corridors that people have been complaining about for decades.
Yes.
But on the prevention side, we have to get serious because we're far behind. We need youth programming. We need jobs. If we don't give young people something positive to say yes to, how are we going to be surprised when they say yes to something dangerous that someone else told them to do?
Right.
At the same time, mental health and addiction services are also lacking compared to neighboring jurisdictions. Our neighbors in crisis aren't just bouncing between 911, the ER, and jail when I'm in, in the council. We're going to hold people in front of us and hold them accountable if services aren't where they need to be. Because public safety isn't just about an arrest number. I, I say this all the time. If arrests solve the problem, we still wouldn't be talking about it. It's about whether people feel, feel safe walking from synagogue, walking from church, walking from the bus stop, or even, you know, civil things like feeling safe letting their kids play outside in their own neighborhoods, which too often I hear when I'm knocking doors, people don't feel safe doing so.
Okay. Now, do you, you think that the, the county is allocating the policing resources effectively? And if not, what would you change?
Yeah, it's a tough question because I, you know, I don't have the specific numbers in front of me. But what I will say is, right now, we ask cops to be everything for everyone.
Yeah.
We ask them to be social workers. We ask them to be traffic cops. We ask them to be mental health responders and simultaneously violent crime units and investigators. And then we act so surprised when nobody is happy with the results. So I'll tell you what I'm going to push for, Brian, is smarter deployment and co-responder models. So that means sending trained mental health professionals with, or even sometimes instead of police for certain calls. So people in crisis get the right kind of help that they need, deserve, and pay for with their tax dollars. And also we need real data transparency. Residents need to be able to see where resources are going. And, and also what's working and what's not. Because I got to tell you, government is a collaborative effort. And people have great ideas on how to deal with certain issues. And often they're ignored or they don't have the data to back it up. So it's tough. And, and I'll, I'll end this question with this. The goal is not more policing or less policing. I think that eliminates the nuance in the conversation.
Right.
I think the goal is effective and accountable policing. That keeps people safe, but also respects their rights.
Okay. You sound like a proponent of a technology as well.
Absolutely. I mean, I, I am a vehement believer in AI. I was for a very short time, a computer science major in undergrad because throughout high school, I was engaging in very early AI activity. I was doing cybersecurity and things like that. Competing against other schools nationwide in cybersecurity competitions. But AI is the ballgame. And the question isn't whether or not we use AI. It's how effectively and quickly can we implement it so it serves a good purpose? It, it could be used in so many different things, but the problem with using it in policing is of course the unreliability of, you know, and disparate impact of, you know, relying on AI when it comes to certain demographics. I think that is a major issue. And it's something that the AI world hasn't yet grappled with. So I, I am all for AI, absolutely. But when we talk about its intersection with policing, that's an entirely different conversation that we're not really prepared to have yet.
I'm right there with you. I agree 100%. 100%. So one of the things we were talking about in some of the other podcast episodes was housing development and zoning. And I know that this particular area, I've seen some of the, the construction lately. So what is your stance on the new housing growth versus protecting established neighborhoods?
Yeah. I mean, that is the question of our time. Everybody in this county has an opinion on development. And, you know, even though the lines have shifted, I'm running in District Four and I have communities in District Four to care about. But every single council member in this next nine-member council has to look at development from a countywide perspective. What happens in places in like Dundalk and Randallstown impacts people in Pikesville and Locker.
Right.
They affect our traffic. They affect our schools. They affect our economy. So with that said, I am unabashedly in support of smart growth, but not growth at any cost. And I think there's a real difference there. We absolutely need new housing. If we want young people, workers, seniors, to be able to stay in parts of this county that they're struggling in right now. We're seeing a real mass exodus of people my age, folks 10 years older than me, and also our seniors that are saying, hey, I love this place, but I'm not sure it's loving us back. And that's because cost of living and affordability and, and paychecks are not stretching as far as they used to.
Right.
But to build that housing, it has to be done in the right way. It has to respect the character of existing neighborhoods. It has to be able to, you know, pass the litmus test of are community members involved in this? Are community members at the table? And does the final project reflect some of their fingerprints? Can't overwhelm stressed schools and roads because our schools are our number one investment vehicle. People go to good schools and businesses go where talent is anchored.
That's a fact.
And, you know, it really is. And I got to tell you, we have the most four-star schools in the state of Maryland, according to the last report. And people aren't talking about it. People are still stuck in this age where Baltimore County schools weren't performing with neighbors. And I got to tell you, we have a great superintendent. We've got a great government affairs person with that superintendent. And we've seen great progress as a result of the investment that this county has made. So, you know, back to housing, for every project, I'm going to be asking a very simple question. Who is this really for?
Okay.
And I'll tell you right now, and hold me to this, if the answer isn't for the people who already live, work, and worship here and their kids, we have to rethink it.
Okay. Makes sense. Now, you, you did mention something about the rent and people having to move out because they couldn't afford rent or this housing. How do you plan to address the rising rents? And I know there's only so much you can do, but how do you plan to at least attack it? And, you know, other housing affordability issues in your district?
Yeah. As much as I wish I could snap my fingers and deal with global inflation and some of these other macro issues that impact people where the rubber meets the road in county government. I think whether you're, you know, first of all, obviously you can't. But whether you're renting in Milford Mill, you know, or you've been in Pikesville for 30 years, this district and this county needs to be a place you can afford to stay. And affordability is my top priority. No one should be having to pick between paying rent and buying groceries. That's an inhumane decision. So here's what I support, straight up. Mixed income development.
Hmm. Okay.
Where new projects include units that are affordable for working families. Teachers, nurses, county workers, not just luxury apartments for those that may employ them. Because I got to tell you, we would not be the county that we are today without the teachers that we have, without the nurses that we have, without the, you know, code enforcement officers, the, the people that drive Uber. They are crucial to this county's economy. And without mixed income developments, we're not going to be able to keep them here. And simultaneously, you know, and this is, this is beaten to death like a drum. But we need stronger protections for renters. We can't have surprise fees. We can't have people without access to legal aid. So tenants don't know their own rights. We can't let people be bullied out of their own homes because of that. So I fully support stronger protections for renters. But, you know, according to the data. And I think targeted tax credits and assistance for longtime homeowners, things that we've already tested and are tried and true in many other jurisdictions, especially, right, for seniors on fixed incomes who, you know, don't have the cost of living adjustments that keep up with inflation. We can't let them be taxed out of neighborhoods that they helped build. It's not a difficult, you know, thought process.
Right. You mentioned the key word, tax credits. So now, along with that, we, you know, you can drive through some of the areas and then some of it looks kind of old and rundown. Not as bad as other places, but do you have a plan to attract more employers, maybe small businesses, for increased job opportunities?
Absolutely. Sheila Lewis is a wonderful community advocate in the Villanova community. The day I met her, she mentioned something that I have stolen from her, and I give her credit each time because of it, called benign neglect. And benign neglect, from that perspective, is decades of elected officials blowing off short-term, what they think is short-term problems that then pile up and, and join on top of each other until they're insurmountable objects that destroy communities and bring blight. And I got to tell you, I want District Four to remove that benign neglect, sure. But also I want District Four to be the best place in Baltimore County to start and grow a business. And first and foremost, that means cutting red tape.
Okay.
I hear nothing but complaints at the doors of, from small business owners closing their shops at 5:00 PM, whatever it may be. Folks come and they say, hey, I applied for a permit. I've heard nothing. I, this is a great example. Not necessarily business-related, but goes to show how deep this problem goes. I had a constituent, and, and mind you, I'm not even in office yet. Somebody called me and reached out to me because during one of those massive May storms that we had this past spring, a huge oak tree punctured into their living room. And this, this, this family and this disabled child had to evacuate. And still since May, have not yet had the permitting approved to be able to repair the roof of their living room. They've been living in hotels. They've been living in, you know, friends' couches and friends' basements. And that is simply unacceptable. And when we see that grow to a larger scale, we see how it impacts businesses. If somebody is starting a business and they're thinking, where should I start this business? And they look at Baltimore County and hear a story about that permitting delay, I got to tell you, if I'm that business owner, this would be the last place I'd look.
Right.
I wouldn't look for a place that would take eight months to approve a permit for an awning. I'd look for a place that says, we want you here and our permitting system is set up to prove it.
Okay.
And, you know, focusing on key corridors is also part of that equation. We have Liberty Road. We have Reiserstown Road, Old Court, Pikesville's commercial areas, places that were thriving before I was born. Okay? And, and at the same time, they are now with great bones as hubs for a walkable mixed-use development community where people can live, work, and shop close to home. And I got to tell you, that's the ballgame. If I am starting a business, if I'm looking where to move as a young person, as somebody starting a family, I'm going to look for the place that has the amenities and the retail and the shopping and everything I could possibly think of within walking distance. And we have the bones in this county to do that on a mass level.
Okay. And that's, a lot of people will look for that when they come to an area of convenience and schools. So that's, that's a great thing.
Absolutely.
Now, tax incentives, do you support tax incentives to attract new companies? Or do you prefer investment in the local entrepreneurs?
Yeah, I, I think what's beautiful about the Liberty Road corridor is how many people self-identify as an entrepreneur. I think people are really excited about this age and technology and the ability to make money from your own living room. And I think that's really important. But talking specifically about investment for local businesses, I, I'm absolutely open to tax incentives. But again, the threshold question is only if they clearly pay the community back. If a large company wants a tax break, I want to see real local hiring commitments. I want to see living wage jobs. I want to see tangible investments on the block, not just a logo on a building. But again, you know, with that said, my bias is towards investing in local entrepreneurs. The barber shops, the, the restaurants, childcare centers sprouting out, professional services, home-based businesses, like I was talking about, woven into our neighborhoods. Because I got to tell you, Brian, those are the folks who keep showing up year after year, even after the headlines. And we got to keep them or we're in trouble.
Right. That's, that's a fact. And you mentioned people coming into a particular area, looking at the, the businesses there, the things that they could do, where they could walk to, those amenities, basically. And one of the things also, talking to people who used to come in and talk to me about, you know, coming to Baltimore County, they would ask about the schools. So what will you advocate specifically for to improve Baltimore County public schools? Especially the ones that serve your district?
Yeah. I mean, Brian, you know, and, and I know from listening to your other podcasts with other candidates, council members don't run BCPs.
Right.
But with that said, the council has immense power to hold people in front of them and hold them accountable. And with that said, I believe education is the single most powerful tool we have to break cycles of inequity. And it changed my life. I, I wouldn't be where I am without the privileges that I had to be able to go to the school that I did. And I feel like good schools bring that same chance to everybody. And as I said, as council member, I don't have specific jurisdiction over BCPs. But I'll tell you right now, I will have the loudest voice on the budget and in public oversight. We have to focus on overcrowding. We have to make sure our west side schools get their fair share of capital investment. And not just told again and again, wait just a little while longer. Because I, I got to tell you, I'm sick of it. And every door I knock on, they're sick of it too. And second is support staff and teacher funding and retention. Counselors, social workers, para educators, bus drivers. They are essential for student success. Just as a student needs a textbook to learn, you need a bus driver to get them there to learn in the first place. And if we're not looking out for those support staff simultaneously with our teachers, I think we're not going to have the education system that our kids need and deserve. And, and I, I'm very fortunate and glad that the current superintendent has seen that and has acted accordingly. I, I really, I just want to make sure our schools are preparing students for real life. That's, that's the test for schools to me, not just teaching to the test.
Right. I, we've had conversations before in that regard, I think back in the day before me. You know, in schools, they had curriculums and other programs to prepare, you know, students for life. And a lot of parents don't feel that schools do that now. So, and, and of course now is a different day. So what are some of the specific investments do you support in youth development?
Uh, well, I think when we talk about youth development, if I'm understanding your question correctly, I think we're talking about being serious about the resources kids have available to keep them away from some of the negative influences that too often encroach on their lives.
Absolutely.
So I, I think if we're ever going to be serious about reducing violence, again, we have to be serious about what we offer young people before there's a problem in the first place. So, you know, we're crafting legislation to release on our website now that pushes for evening and weekend hours at rec centers and school facilities, for sports, for music, for arts, for mentorship. And we have, I got to tell you, just campaigning, it has become so clear to me. Our churches, our synagogues, our mosques, our nonprofits, our alumni groups, whatever it is, we have an immense social network in this county. We have people that have devoted their lives to strengthening these networks. And too often they feel like the county doesn't take advantage of that. I got to tell you, we have to. It is the number one requirement. If we're to get serious about, because government can't handle everything. Government isn't intended to do everything. We empower these groups to help us. The county saves money to use on the services it already provides. And by supporting these other services, these church groups, the alumni groups, we're able to put kids in with mentors. We're able to give young people programs that feel comfortable. And, and that lead to summer jobs, that lead to internships, that lead to apprenticeship programs. So teenagers can earn money. They can build a resume. They can see a future for themselves. It's all part of the equation alongside with our schools, alongside with our public universities and our community colleges. We spend so much money on the backend, on, on courts, on jails, on emergency response. I want to see more of that investment upstream into prevention because we need to be proactive.
Yeah. And one thing that a lot of people don't realize, sometimes those things, the arrests and, you know, not looking at things in a proactive way actually costs more money on the backend.
Absolutely. And that's called efficiency in government. And if this was about insurance and procurement and we had an inefficient method of procuring insurance for our county employees, this would be dealt with. But because it is a different issue, because there's a racial component, because of all these different factors, it hasn't been dealt with in an equitable way. And I got to tell you, it saves the county money, just as you said.
Hmm. Okay. So this is something that, that's important to me. And it was the roads, and we mentioned it, we talked about it earlier. Have, have anybody talked to you about their feelings on expanding public transit options in your district? And what's your position on that?
Absolutely. Yeah. I, yeah. So. Yeah, so I think folks know we have the Towson Loop that runs a circuit in Towson. And there's some nuance about that loop. It costs about $5 million a year. And the people using it aren't often folks that frankly need it. And absolutely, people use it that do need it. But we're spending a lot of money on a program that isn't necessary for some of the folks that are taking advantage of it. But with that said, the West Side, the West Side is a totally different story because we have so many job centers, so many healthcare centers and rec centers that are simply inaccessible to so many residents on the West Side. Whether it's because, you know, there's one car in a family, whether it's because people live, you know, so far from where they work that they have to Uber every day.
Right.
So I got to tell you, on key areas in Liberty Road and Reisterstown Road, we have to focus on transit. I'll be honest with you, I'm not yet convinced a West Side Loop is worth the investment. I'm also looking into things like Uber vouchers, things that are specifically tuned for folks that need it to be able to use it to get to work, to get to church, to get to rec centers. Because that's more efficient. And again, I'm about efficiency, I'm about spending dollars where we need to. And I got to tell you, we need to spend dollars here. The question is just, who do we target specifically?
Ah, okay, okay. So that'll lead me into another question that's related. Where do you believe taxpayer dollars are being wasted currently? And what would you cut or just restructure?
Yeah, so the Baltimore County Council has the power to amend or cut the budget as presented by the county executive. We don't have power to add. And with that said, you know, answering your question directly, I think that's a good premise because a lot of folks don't fully grasp the dynamic of what happens in that council chamber when it's budget season. But, you know, flat out, I think we waste money whenever we approve projects that don't actually solve core problems, like the things that I was just talking about. When we fund programs, and this happens all the time, when we fund programs without clear goals and actionable outcomes that we can then measure and say, did we hit that goal? Is this the outcome that we wanted? And I think we also waste money when we keep paying for the same issue year after year without ever saying, hell, maybe we should take a look at this and see if this approach isn't working. So with that said, you know, I don't have a specific line item for you, but what I do have is, you know, a statement. I'm going to push for a performance-based budgeting. If a program works, let's invest in it. If it doesn't, let's reform it or redirect those dollars to something that does. And I want more of our budget shifted towards this and shifted towards preventative investment, shifted towards youth programs, towards mental health, towards infrastructure, so we're not constantly paying again for reactivity or crisis response.
Okay, makes sense. It makes it more fluid instead of rigid, so you get things done. Now, I'm a social media guy. I'm always on social media, causing problems, arguing, whatever, because it's fun. Now, some of the things that I've heard people complain about was property taxes. And what, and most of the time, they really don't understand how the property taxes work. So for them, would you support raising or lowering property taxes or income taxes? And if so, under what circumstances?
Yeah, I'm not running to raise taxes. I think when businesses decide where to invest, when people decide where to move or where to leave to, they're looking at taxes. And I got to tell you, if we are struggling with our current budget and we're not providing the suitable environment for businesses to come here already, and I argue that we're not doing everything we need to do, then raising taxes makes that problem 100 times worse. People in District Four are already feeling squeezed, whether it's, you know, housing costs, groceries, utilities. I feel those pressures too. I'm a young person. And, you know, at the same time, I don't want to make irresponsible promises just to be elected. I think folks deserve way more than that. I think that's politics of the old. And if we hit a moment, I think that's the truth, you know, it's funny, but it's true. The bar is so low, and that's a whole nother conversation.
Right.
If we ever hit a moment where, if we ever hit a moment where new revenue is absolutely necessary, if it's the worst-case scenario possible, you know, it's a different conversation. And it always includes transparency. That's the key to that conversation. And again, my starting point is simple. Use what we have better before you ask working families for more.
Okay, and I think that'll make a lot of people happy, according to social media. But you mentioned transparency.
Yeah.
And I've asked this question of the other candidates. How will you maintain transparency with residents and keep them informed about your decisions?
Yeah, so I've grown up around politicians. I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I got to tell you, the ugly is always associated with a lack of transparency. It is like a routine. It is like black and white, yin and yang. When you have one, you have the other.
Right.
And it makes it more than a buzzword. We have to be, and this is a controversial word, we have to be radical about this.
Hmm.
Because that's the job description. We have to have regular town halls across the county. I'm not just going to talk to folks in District Four, of course, that's my priority. But I would be failing at my job, just as a member of Congress would be, if they don't listen to what's happening outside their district as well. So not just one central spot. We have to bring county services and county decision-making into churches, into community spaces, into synagogues. And we have to be able to say, folks, you know, this is what I did, this is how I justify it, and this is how I took your input into that decision. And alongside that, it means sending plain language updates. I can't tell you how many times a county order has dropped and folks ask me, what does this mean?
What does it mean, right?
Or who does this affect? Yeah, it's unbelievable. We have a county government that is, you know, first of all, it's a part-time job. It's folks that also have another responsibility often. And, you know, we're sending out language that isn't interpretable by folks that they're spending their time with outside of the council in the first place.
Right.
You know, we need emails and social media and other accessible formats. But the key is explaining what's coming up for a vote and how I plan to vote ahead of time. And this last thing is, I think you could tell, I'm not a huge promise person.
Right.
But I will promise, my schedule for public events will be published regularly. People want to know what their council member is doing. I'm going to be representing, if I win, or when I win, I'll say, 90,000 constituents.
Woo!
And I got to tell you, if any of those 90,000 people want to know what their council member is doing, they shouldn't have to look through 15 different web pages and emails to figure it out. I'm chosen by the people, and if I'm not for the people, fire me. And I think transparency is the biggest key in that.
Okay, 90,000 is a lot of people for one person to be responsible for. That's a lot.
Yeah, that's, I got to tell you, before redistricting, it was about 120,000. So we're making some progress there.
Wow, wow. I had a hot issue, it just escaped me. Now, Carson Chemnitz, that's a name that a lot of people are familiar with. So what personal experiences shaped your desire to run for office?
Yeah, absolutely losing my father. He served in public life. He was already in elected office before I was born. And losing him at such a young age, I was, you know, 15 years old, it forced me to ask, what am I going to do with the time I have left? I said early in this conversation that I started as a computer science major. I thought I'd go into tech. But I couldn't shake that feeling of after he died, in the Jewish religion, it's called shiva. You sit at your home and folks that are also mourning this death come and share that with you. And it's a seven-day period for us. And during that shiva period, of course, my father Kevin was running for governor when he suddenly passed. People were walking in that I had never met before and would have never met ever. Folks that were hugging me. You know, I remember a nurse still in her nurse's gown, coming straight from a shift, crying because Kevin kept the community program open for her. So hearing all of that, hearing the impact of local government, far beyond something I can personally feel, really encouraged me to continue that work of service in my own way. And at the same time, the experience I've had that I've articulated with you in this conversation, seeing where my teammates lived, seeing how they were treated, it made it impossible for me to ignore the gaps in opportunity. Your zip code is predicting your future, and that doesn't sit right with me, and I don't think it sits right with other folks. So that's what pushed me to really switch to law and government and politics. And I feel called to this. I see privilege as a responsibility, and I see that last name as something you have to earn every single day. And now I feel free to give it everything I have because I don't want my own kids to feel like they are dictated by the five numbers at the end of their address.
Right, yeah, I fully agree with that one. So it was a pretty good interview. You answered a lot of, you know, pressing questions. But the main one that I'm going to leave you with is, and I ask this of everyone, why should the voters trust you, especially in this political atmosphere?
Yeah. I think District Four voters should trust me if you're looking for someone who's in this not for a title or a photo op, but for the work.
Okay.
If you're looking for somebody that has seen the advantages and the inequalities in this county and refuses to accept them as something that's normal or part of the pot. Someone that's willing to listen to higher experience, to learn, and to fight, even when it's uncomfortable or politically inconvenient or may make me unpopular. And I can't promise I'll be perfect. Again, I'm not a promise guy, but I can promise, but I can promise I'll be honest, I'll be accessible, and I will be relentless in trying to make District Four safer, more affordable, and fairer for everyone who calls it home.
Outstanding. And I think in this atmosphere, honesty is something that everyone is looking for. So...
Yeah, I mean, I got to tell you, if a politician came to me with a decision that I didn't agree with and justified their line of thinking, that is far better for me to swallow than if the otherwise, or if the opposite happened. If they came and made a decision I wasn't happy with and they threw their hands up and said, deal with it. Honesty goes a long way.
Right.
And I feel like what the younger generation understands that folks currently in office don't is that when you're honest, the political stuff comes, it'll follow.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'd like to thank you for taking time out of your very busy schedule. And I know it's been a busy schedule, and I know it's going to get busier. And I think the residents of District Four and surrounding districts would appreciate this interview. And I'll make sure that they, you know, get it out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thanks, Brian. I appreciate it. I'm sorry that you're not going to be a county resident to see the beautiful things that we're going to be doing here, but I'll welcome you back anytime. My schedule is not that busy for you, all right?
Thank you, I appreciate it. And good luck with the campaign.
Thanks for the time.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, family, for listening to the latest episode of Hot Topics. As usual, listen, like, share, subscribe. Ta.